Yes, sir.
It's called me order began to pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Over here is Eric Bossen, Carolyn Diesel, James Kirchner, Jamie Blue, Joshua Gudiger, Marjorie Sigler. All present and accounted for. Board of Education norms are available. If you'd like to pull that up. And we have the approval of the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion of second, all in favor? Aye. Is he opposed? Motion carries contractor interviews, construction manager at risk.
With us this evening, we have S.M. Wilson. They were one of the four companies who submitted an RFQ, made the cut for the RFP process, and are here at your pleasure. Feel free, I think you have a presentation first, I believe, is that correct? You'll do a presentation, then you have some questions, and if you have some questions of your own, feel free.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you. And hello, and thank you for inviting us here this afternoon. We're very excited to talk to you about your construction management at-risk building program. We know that's meaningful to you. My name is Amy Berg, and I'm the president of S.M. Wilson, been hanging around S.M. Wilson for 26 years now. And I'm just thrilled to be here today to just really talk to you about how S.M. Wilson, S.M. Wilson, the team, and myself would like to help you go beyond the build with your program. It's so important, obviously, for not only to improve your facilities, but what that means to the community and to the kiddos. So, we have put together about a 30-minute presentation. We built a website for you. There's more on that website than we can cover in 30 minutes, so we're going to leave access available to you after we're out the door, so you can navigate that. But we'll use it to navigate in our presentation for now, but we wanted to leave a lot of time for discussion and questions, so. So, S.M. Wilson, a little bit more about us. We're headquartered here in Missouri. We've been in the construction business for 101 years, so just a little bit of experience. And during that time, we've really become kind of the experts in Missouri for construction management. Earlier on, it was agency, and now, under the 2016 statutes for Missouri, you're allowed to do the at-risk now. So, we have about a billion dollars' worth of K-12 experience in Missouri, and may, all four pre-K-12 school districts, most involving multi-b buildings, multi-sites, multi-year programs, and so you are more than welcome to talk to any of our references. And a lot of that work has been for repeat clients. Ladue, Pattonville, Halsville, Alton, missing one, Mayborn, Richmond Heights are all multi-bond issue projects that we've partnered with them on. And we'll talk a little bit more about a couple of those jobs. So, I just wanted to kind of take one moment to applaud you for selecting this. I know that it's a new delivery method for you. That can be sometimes daunting to do something new, but I think that with our CM at-risk experience right now with six school districts, it's about $330 million's worth of CM at-risk work that's either just recently completed or is under construction right now. I think you can kind of hit the easy button with us. We'll help you through that. So, in that process, and we'll talk more about it here momentarily, but it's all about transparency, financial transparency for you. It's about getting, selecting the best subcontractors, and it's really a partnership, building a partnership with your architect, KRJ, ourselves, and the district. So, it really is truly a partnership from start to finish. So, let me introduce the team here real quickly, and then they'll talk a little bit more about themselves. There's only five of us here today, but there are many, many folks back at the office that will touch your project and help this team from start to finish. So, Jack Kinnamore. Jack? Jack is our director, executive director, for all of our pre-K-12 public education work. He's also an executive on our leadership team, so he brings a lot to the table. Jack's done some very complex building programs, again, multi-site, multi-building, multi-year programs, so he brings a lot to this, to the district here as well. Patrick is, Patrick Alesworth is our pre-con director for just our pre-K-12 district clients. And he spent the last several years really refining our processes, both for pre-construction and construction, specifically around construction management at risk. Colonel Sweeney down at the end is your project manager, and Colonel has not only school experience, but he also lives nearby in Deloche, so he's very experienced with the community here and with the subcontracting community as well. And Colonel has school experience. Jim Brown will be our full-time onsite superintendent. Not someone superintendent. Jim's got 30 years in the business, more than that probably. I say 30, because I'm well over that as well, so just cut it off at 30. Jim has school experience all over the state of Missouri, and he's also got his OSHA 30 certification as well. So, I think Hillsborough and Wentzville are two kind of more recent school projects for Jim. So, with that, I am going to turn it over to Jack.
Yep. Thanks, Amy. Good evening, Board of Education and Administration. I want to thank you for letting us present to you today on your very exciting program. We're really looking forward to it. To echo what Amy said, we really feel like the CMAR experience is a really great value that we can provide. We have a lot of expertise with the K-12 delivery, specifically the CMAR delivery. And our team here today is here to demonstrate our expertise in that and can see how you, we can show you how we can partner with you to work through that program and ultimately provide the best value to the district and the community. Again, I'm Jack Kinnamore. I'm a project director, oversee our K-12 school projects. I have 22 years' experience with S.M. Wilson, and over the years throughout my career, I've got the opportunity to work through a lot of different school programs throughout the state of Missouri and Illinois. We've done several different delivery methods, in my experience more recently with the passing of the statutes of CMAR. Really feel like that's provided the ultimate experience for our school district partners, as well as our project teams and our architects, to get in there early with the school district and really use our expertise and help navigate through a lot of the challenges. We'll talk more about some of those even more current challenges the industry's facing. A couple of the more current projects I've been working with are, the first one is Francis Howe School District. They recently passed the largest bond issue in the state of Missouri. We're working on a major component of that bond issue. It's a replacement high school, and it is a CMAR project. And some of, it's the first time they've used CMAR as well, and they're working with a repeat architect client, and they really, some of the priorities that we had onboarding that project were really helping us navigate through the CMAR statutes and the process, and it's a different type of process than the normal design, bid, build. That was a huge priority. Another priority for them were, being in St. Charles County, they're really focused on the St. Charles County workforce, as well as the community engagement, and how from the pre-construction through the construction process is how can we make this a celebration? And we've, we're in the middle of construction, and I can say that we're successfully doing that. More recently, we're hired on with Pattonville School District. This is our seventh concurrent bond issue working with Pattonville. The first is a CMAR, so they've selected CMAR this year for their project. It is a 14-campus, multi-campus project that's $111 million. It'll spend six years. Again, working with them, the priorities for them are quite different than Francis Howe. Again, they didn't have a replacement high school. It's working on 14 aging campuses, occupied campuses, and we're working through just upgrades, additions, renovations. And for them, in that time, really, of this uncertainty of the market conditions is how can they have a partner to help navigate? You know, we've just started the pre-construction services, and we'll talk a little bit more about some of that in the future, but really how to navigate those market conditions, and ultimately, they've made a lot of promises to the community through that bond issue, and how can we as a team help deliver those promises and really provide the best value to the community? And really, the schedule's a key, important thing, too, so those are a lot of things that we're helping work through, material selections, early bid packages, to help deliver basically, ultimately, the best value and overall best schedule, which again, kind of reduces, by being efficient, we can reduce those dollars. That being said, I'm going to turn it over to Patrick.
Actually, Jack, sorry, can I talk about Ladue?
Oh, yeah.
It's relevant as well, and I should have jumped in there, but, so Ladue School District, we're out in our fifth bond issue program for them. We've been working with them for over 20 years. And this is the first time they've used construction management at risk. It's always been as an agent before. And so, again, new for them, and, but we've, we are under construction on two additions and a heavy renovation at their middle school right now, two expansions of heavy renovation at Old Bottom Elementary School, and then basically a brand-new Spady Elementary School that we're building about 10 feet away from the existing school that's been occupied this entire time. And again, so Mike Noonan, who's their facilities director, we've worked with Mike for all that time. Dr. Whipke is rather new, so very new process and a big building program for him, but I would encourage you to, you know, talk to our references. Mike Noonan, I think, would tell you that we've been a trusted partner for all of those 20-plus years. So, again, just the processes that we've developed, and Patrick specifically, and Jack, through these construction management at-risk building programs really has made a difference, and so we keep learning more and more, right? So, you'd be the beneficiary of another one under our belt, so. But anyway, Patrick, you want to talk?
Absolutely. Patrick Alesworth, pre-construction manager, really excited to be here this afternoon to talk with you all. I think what you'll find is, is this team has a lot of passion for what we do, especially our education programs, the impact it has with the community and the students, so we bring that with us today. So, the pre-construction process is really the key for the CMR risk delivery method. So, we get in early, we're going to work hand-in-hand with KRJ and the district folks, all the end-users, to make sure we're all on the same page with the budget and the schedule, and really, in these market conditions of uncertain times, it gives you a little more certainty on that budget and that schedule, so that we're making the right decisions early, and we're heading in the right direction from the get-go in these early design phases. So, what we really want to do is identify risk and then find a way to mitigate it. And as Amy and Jack are sharing, we have a plethora of examples that we can share with you, a couple relevant ones from Winfield School District, which is a new middle school that we're just getting to wrap up here in about a month. One of them was a roofing system challenge that we had. This is back last September, and Firestone was supplying our roof insulation, said, oh, we're probably about six months out now. We got kicked down in the delivery order, which wasn't going to work. So, we got creative, sat down with the design team, found a different system, a roofing system meets specifications from John Mansville, and ended up finding the product in California and trucking it out, and keeping the project moving as we marched through the wintertime to button that roof system up. So, again, saving the project and just getting creative with, you know, the entire team, the design team, to make that work. And another example was our electrical switch gear. The breakers, the main breakers were kind of held hostage, if you will, from Eaton, one of the big electrical suppliers, and so we worked with them to find a way to use a legacy breaker, kind of an older model breaker, if you will, that would work, and they would UL list, you know, that product. And again, just getting creative and sitting down, how can we now work through this challenge and keep things on track? So, I think what you'll find from our team is that we are going to get creative and bring solutions. You know, anyone can report the news, you can open the newspaper, read, you know, anywhere right now that all the challenges out there, but we'll, you know, find, you know, some possible, possible solutions and bring those to the table. Some other examples are just, as Jack mentioned, getting out in front and getting some early bid packages for those longer lead items, so we're very familiar with that process. It's almost a regular process now that, you know, we're in this new marketplace. And then opening the spec, so, you know, the design team may have a certain product that they recommend, and we just recommend you open that to different manufacturers, and that way you have a better chance of meeting schedule constraints and budget constraints. So, again, just a few examples that we can share, several others, and, so I'll share a little bit about the front-end process with pre-construction, so we will help develop all the front-end documents, we'll package those, we'll solicit them out on the market, and we'll find a way to carve the bid packages appropriately, so we get local participation from a lot of the contractors right around this market. You know, we're very familiar with a lot of subcontractors, and we'll leverage that relationship to get the best value for the district. And I'll be working hand-in-hand with the team, you know, Jack, Colonel, and Jim, as we work through pre-construction. They have obviously years and years of experience to add to the process and be familiar with your program, so we'll, we'll work as a team hand-in-hand through this, you know, making sure, again, like I said, we have those budget checks throughout the design phases, make sure things are in line, and then work towards a guaranteed maximum price that we would present, be transparent with the board, and show you that backup as we move forward. So, a little bit about the pre-construction. I'll hand it back over to Jack now.
Sure. So, again, we don't have hours to kind of go through our whole pre-construction process, but we've been, with the CMAR, construction management at-risk delivery method, we've been delivering that for a couple decades with our private clients, and one thing is we have such a rich history with our educational partners, and with Missouri opening that up to the CMAR process for the public sector, it's, we've really dialed in, and we've really worked as a team over the last four or five years to dial in our CMAR process to make sure that we can provide the best value to the district. And honestly, we could have all kinds of testimonials within our company and our clients, but some of these projects delivered with the CMAR and done the right way have been the most, I mean, really impactful and engaging experiences I've had in my whole career. So, a lot of that starts with, as Patrick started talking about, was pre-construction, and one of the benefits is bringing us on early, like any project, cost management is key, and that really starts the onset of bringing us onboard. So, one thing that will happen if we get the opportunity to work with you on your bond issue is immediately we will work with you and the design team, and luckily, we like, or usually, we like to come in at the program or the schematic phase, and with some little information, we can take that information, input it into our custom estimate model system, and really, we can drive in a detailed cost with quantity-based that'll have a detailed estimate at a program level, and it'll have dozens and dozens of pages of backup that'll be a starting point that, okay, here's your program, here's the priorities, here's how much your program is versus your budget, and usually, those are fairly in line, but we can use those values, what we call target values, to make sure through every step of pre-construction and design, that we're working towards these priorities, and again, we're on multiple campuses on, you know, multiple different projects, that we can keep those values and keep things on budget. So, it's a very proactive approach with the target value design. It's not reactive, where we let the architect, in a sense, work in a vacuum, get to a pretty far along design, and we do a budget check, and next thing we know, we're well over budget. So, this is more a proactive approach as a partner to, you know, work with the design team and the district to keep things on track. Kind of a recent example, you've heard us talk about Pattonville, that's just my most recent example, as we come onboard two or three months ago with their pre-construction process, and again, they have a lot of things they promised the district, we have the market uncertainty, so we are working, we came in at the program level, so very high level, you know, we want to add this, we need this, we need this classroom space, so we came in and did that detailed budget. We were a little bit over budget to get started with, but we're working through those priorities, and we're providing solutions. So, we know certain roofing types, or certain gear, or certain manufacturers have really significant lead times, so we can help make, or we can help the architect and the district make these decisions. How can we have an early bid package in order to secure steel that's a year out from now, or pre-cast that's a year out? How can we do something that's actually designed early, procure it early, and have it on time? So, those are the type of solutions that we're bringing to the table, and we're meeting with them weekly right now, and we have made tremendous progress. And that's just one of the beauties, I think, of the CMAR process, and having an expert here to not tell you how to do it, but to be a partner and, and guide solutions. Right now, we see every day what's going on in the market, we know what lead times are, we know what things are costing. We've been through hills and valleys the last year and a half, and what was a problem a year ago is not a problem, is much of a problem now, it's something new. So, those are things that have in that proactive partnership and help work with, what's been great is a lot of our school projects, this is new, and Pattonville, Francis Howe, Ladue, Winfield, these are all new things. They're used to designing, fully designing things, you know, and then coordinating that with all their engineers and everything, and then putting it out to bid. This is a more proactive process where we can kind of design in bubbles and packages in order to secure things, but also with that very strict budget management, we don't let things get out of whack. So, so anyway, cost control is a tremendous value, and that continues through construction. It's, it starts as soon as we get onboard, and every design step, we'll check it, make sure we're staying on budget, but I'd like to turn it over to Colonel, because the cost control will remain through construction, and I think Colonel's going to walk us through S.M. Wilson's approach to management and just overall safety, quality, the kiddos, and continued cost control.
Okay, thanks, Jack. Colonel Sweeney, I would be your project manager throughout the entire project, I'd be your day-to-day contact at our office, and I'd be onsite quite a bit, since I only live about 40 minutes away, so. I would work in-hand with our superintendent, Jim Brown, for day-to-day processes. A little bit of background on me, I've done work for five different school districts, including one with KRJ at Baylor School District, that was a couple of additions and major interior renovation for the school there. The school, the school was an occupied building throughout. I spent part of my career at the University of Missouri-St. Louis as part of their planning, design, and construction department. I've done dozens of projects there for them on many, many occupied buildings, roads, anything you can think of there. So, very familiar with, with working around students and faculty and anybody else, the general public, keeping them safe on occupied projects. Part of the day-to-day process, we've, we've engaged with your facilities team, janitors, your, your maintenance folks. Generally, they'll know the most about your buildings, and we'd like to know that, too, as we work through the issues that come up. You know, it will have, I would be attending all of your, all the weekly or monthly meetings, OAC meetings, any board meetings that we would need to attend. We would come, I would be as part of the process, coming up with suggestions for issues that come up in the field. I've already met with Dr. Taylor last week, kind of walked your site. Already have some ideas, talking with him about some issues he's, he's looking at with the current state of design. I think there's already some opportunities there that we could look at. So, I would be more of a partner with your team. I would be here, if there's any questions, you can call me pretty much at any time. Like I said, I could, I'll be out here quite a bit. Anyway, so you see my smiling face wherever you want. But we also will, will introduce you to some technology. We will have drones that we can fly over the site, we'll provide videos to you, we'll set up websites. We have a site called Instruction Site, that we will have a camera system out here probably weekly to track just day-to-day construction. You'll be able to see as we build what goes into everything, so whatever, in the future, if you need to make modifications to anything, you'll know what's in the walls, what's in the ground, everything that's here, that'll be, you'll be able to see it as we build Let's see, I guess I will, I'll hand it over to Jim, let him talk about, a little bit about how things will run day-to-day. Go ahead, Jim.
Thanks, Colonel. Jim Brown, site superintendent, carpenter by trade, 30-plus years. I, I'm kind of the nuts-and-the-bolts kind of guy. I put 20,000 steps on my boots throughout the course of the day. Where are we? Who are we? You know, just, just being around the kids that are here, superintendent, as far as communication-wise, what are we, what are we trying to get to today? I have, over the years, I've come to learn a lot about kind of schools. I had no idea there was so much after-hours, before-hours activities that went into, went into a school. I would look at summertime as being, nobody's here on campus, and that was kind of quickly. My perceptions were altered real fast, working on some of the projects that, that I have been involved with over the years. I've worked at Rockville School District, I've worked at Hazelwood, a lot of projects there, Hillsborough Intermediate School, which was a building inside of two other buildings on either side, all of which were, you know, 60, 70-year-old buildings, and the challenges that come with those. So, you know, I, I am in charge of trying to herd the cats on, on the job and keep everybody moving in a consistent manner towards the project, kind of timeline goals and quality assurance and safety of the students at all, all times.
Got to jump in. You know, student safety is a huge thing. You guys are here to teach the students, and I think through our process, through the pre-construction planning, all, I think just hours and hours of planning, sequencing, certain, you know, you know, sequence plans and safety plans and enter and exit plans, all these different types of planning. We also do a pretty rigid and very proactive approach to the safety with our personnel coming to the job site. We're here on the occupied campus, you know, as far as the background checks, you know, we don't have any workforce not allowed, that they're not pre-approved in their background checks, they're not pre-approved, it'll be legal citizens, just in this, everything. It's, we take it very proactive, drug testing, all that. So, again, there's things that keep popping in my head, all the different things that we do as a company, it just, we really are passionate about schoolwork, and it means a lot to us, and you guys are in great hands here with Colonel and Jim, and just the processes we've put in place to make sure your students are safe, and, and really, we want these projects to be a learning environment, and a lot of times, these projects can be, you know, they're just a problem, and we don't want problems. We want solutions, we want to be there to communicate with the school, you're going to be talking to the principals daily, hourly. Communication's not going to be an issue, and also, just the community engagement and all that, we just really, Amy's going to talk a little bit more about that, and this, we get a great program.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, communication, you know, we've talked a lot about it, but we also think it's really important to continue to communicate with your community. They passed, hopefully get the bond issue passed, and so we would like to be a part of that engagement process. We do a lot of, oh, we'll do site tours, events, you know, ribbon cuttings, groundbreaking's, ribbon cuttings. Like Jack said, or Colonel said, we fly the drone pretty regularly and kind of put, and in fact, you can have this website if you'd like to use it as a communication tool. We can customize it for you, or help you customize it, and use it as a way to keep the community engaged in what's going on. The other thing that we do is we trademarked a program called Skilled, and we just felt like, you know, we've touched so many students and have been on so many campuses. campuses, why not use the construction project as a learning environment? And so we like to bring from kids of all ages. We'll do career days where we bring our folks and some of the skilled tradespeople to come in and talk about, you know, what we do for a living. And we'll do construction tours and some days we'll have a heavy equipment day where they can come out and see the operators work heavy equipment. And so it's a wide variety of learning options and a lot of, the classroom work that we do is all revolving around STEAM activities. So we have a whole curriculum that we would love to present to you and to whomever else might be kind of part of that, you know, engagement and talk about how we can customize that program for you. So I think this week, Jack, we had all the students at the Francis Howell School District put handprints on a big beam and they're going to lift that into place and secure it. And so kids that are in, you know, grade school now will be able to see their handprint when they go to high school, have to be building. So just neat things to keep the kids interested because they are interested and this is a way to keep them interested in a productive way instead of climbing over the fence way. So, you know, but it's real fun and we've gotten just great feedback for the program. So, but yeah, I think that as Jack said, this is a rock star team right here. And I think, as I said earlier, we really, you can kind of push the easy button with us because we've just done it and done it and made it better, the process. So we would love to come and help you through the process. And that is all we had and love to answer questions for you.
Thank you guys very much. You know, on the board here, we've got some questions in front of us or if maybe you have any questions, I'm starting to have that in.
Actually, a lot of the questions here have been answered.
Yeah.
So, but there is one here I have. What process or procedures are in place to address conflict resolution between architects, subcontractors and the district? Please provide an example from your experiences as a CMAR.
Well, I can talk about, I had been involved with the Ladue program, actually started with design. I attended every owner, architect, contractor meeting. And I think this was a new process for them as well. There were some things that the district didn't understand because transparency for us is key. And you're going to see some things that you've never seen before because, you know, you're going to get a line item budget that's got 100 lines on it, right? And there are things that they never saw. And so it's really helping them understand what we're showing them. So for instance, we would, early on, I think we had a 10% design contingency. Well, where does that number come from? You know, why is it so high? And so we sort of had to go through the whole process about, we are so early in design and that number, and it was a big number because it's a $105 million program. Throughout the design process, it's kind of eaten up by things that we couldn't ever know when, you know, they gave us the conceptual drawings. And so it's really just explaining those kinds of things to them because it was a new process for them. So, and compromising, you know, I think we ended up saying, okay, well, let's use 8% and we used all 8% of it. I don't know if, Jack, you have?
No, I know the level of transparency is actually overwhelming. You're used to have an architect design everything, coordinated with all their engineers and they put out the bid. You get three or four contractors that give you one number. You're going to have millions of numbers. You're going to have all this background from every trade, electrician, the plumber and you can see all, you can see the bids, you're going to see, we'll make recommendations. I think that's the one thing, is there's so much transparency that it's a little unbecoming that it's actually almost sometimes too much. But transparency is great and it's, I mean, if you follow the statutes, it's there to make sure that we're providing the best value to the district. And really, when I keep using the word values, how can we get the most scope, the most efficient schedule? How can we reduce, you know, schedule by six months that might save $200,000 in general conditions? So I think, again, I think it's, the transparency is a little bit, you'll get used to, or it'll take a little bit of time to get used to it, but our partners that we've worked with in this process really appreciate it and see a new side of construction. As far as the conflict resolution with the architects and ourselves, honestly, I think having us involved early in helping making, doing constructibility reviews, we're doing sequence plans and scheduling and a lot of the stuff, getting our input through design, it won't eliminate all, you'll always have issues that you work through. But one thing I've seen through my own personal experience is having that partnership early. By the time you get to construction, almost always, there is such a level of trust between the client, the school, the architects, the engineers, us and the CM, that it just, it's really, it's pretty impactful. And so I think as we come across issues, those team members, you don't have the conflict that you normally have, that you're going to have somebody chase, you know, a change order because they missed this, it wasn't on the drawings. A lot of that partnership helps kind of resolve some of that stuff through construction in my own experience.
How about using local contractors around here?
Yeah.
Do you know any of these folks or do you use them?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, I'm familiar with a lot of subcontractors in the area. I mean, I've worked with crystal heating cooling, I've worked with sheet metal contractors and so do Meyer Electric. I just did a project with them at the hospital in Farmington earlier this year. I'm pretty familiar with a lot of the contractors in the area, probes masonry, I'll deal probes over there, Lempsdale Excavating, I've worked with them in the past. You know, we're familiar with the players in the area and we'd like to engage them as part of the bid process for all the bid packages that we possibly can.
I don't know if we got into too much details on the website. One thing that we're pretty impactful is, we do have a small office in Cape Girardeau. I know we're not in Cape Girardeau, but we have a lot, know a lot of people in between. The big thing too for us, our success, a lot of our school districts are rural and or even if there's certain areas they want, there are a lot of people here that support of the district to make sure that they voted this in, to make sure they get improvements that their students or their family or their relatives need. So one thing that we try to do is really focus on that in our pre-construction process that we really try to have, again, we have thousands of contractors work for us, but we will try to focus on the localness. And the other thing is, is we'll try to develop, one thing that's different is we develop a scope of work for these bidders to help bid in conjunction with the construction documents. We'll try to, what we call right-size those scopes to make sure not just the largest electricians can get the job, is that we make sure we get opportunities, especially in a multi-school project can, it's not unheard of us to have two or three different trades on, you may have somebody in high school, you may have somebody in elementary school. So we try to right-size those scopes of work, make sure we give opportunities to, you know, some of the companies that, you know, an electrician might be able to take on 300,000 versus somebody bigger that could take on 3 million. So we try to right-size the projects for that. And we also have, we have specific, a lot of times we'll have, we'll set up shop here at the district or wherever and we'll have, you know, open house nights where we'll try to generate the interest and let the local and the regional contractors know, here's the projects and kind of give them kind of an upper edge to know that here's what's coming out there, here's how we're looking to scope it, can we get your advice too? So there's multiple things that we do to really focus on that and I think we've had a pretty good, since we've been proactive, a pretty good success rate of engaging the locals and again, hopefully that answers.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
Yes.
Kate, tell us about the biggest obstacle that you all encountered and then what steps did you take to solve?
I think the most recent is the market conditions and it's not just on one certain project, it's on all projects. And it's ever changed from, it really started in first quarter of 2021, you know, with the 2020, the COVID things, a lot of work slowed down, shut down, people were furloughed, lost jobs. 2021, we started seeing the impact from the supplier ends. It's really been navigating through that with all clients. And 2021 was pretty hard, the first couple quarters and it kept, it was rapidly increasing of what material problems there were. It's starting to level out now, but I think our success has been able to, really, I think this is a lot of the CM-type projects have been able to have us in there early to understand or somewhat understand what's going on with those market conditions and be proactive to make changes, make, you talked about material changes, not change the quality of the material, but maybe something different that that architect was used to specifying. So I think it's really coming up with those solutions, but by far, the biggest problems in my own experience in the last two years have definitely been the market and our ability to, we've had a dedicated, we have several pre-construction directors and managers and nine estimators that are getting constant feedback all through last year and even the first half of this year. We're getting weekly publications from the market, from different markets and it's how to be us understanding what's coming next. Nobody has a crystal ball, but we've been trying to proactively watch this stuff on a weekly basis and a lot of the folks back at the office and then what, even us in more operations, what we're hearing in the trades and the trenches and how can we be proactive?
To what Jack was saying, the other challenge we're seeing lately is the labor shortage, which you're talking a lot about. So we're having to get creative, set the schedules up at the front end and really make sure that those trade partners are able to meet those schedule constraints. And so we do that as a part of our scoping process. So we're not only soliciting the scopes of work, but also the schedule and all the requirements Jack talked about, the front ends. And so we're able to make sure we can try to meet those schedules, not to say lately we've had to, you know, get creative and call certain subcontractors and their sub-tiers and, you know, last minute form a crew to help, you know, another project and keep things moving forward. But that's something that's not going to go away unfortunately, but yeah, something that we're working through, getting creative each project that we take on.
We have a whole warehouse full of roofing material.
Yeah.
We had to buy it.
Early purchase.
Early purchase because they wouldn't hold the price until it was on the ground. So we bought it and rented a warehouse and now roofing's being installed, but you know, gosh, we never had to do that kind of thing before and that's happening all over the place.
You have so many, you know, projects going on. How will you ensure that St. Jen's projects stay on schedule and a priority to you and as big of a priority as they are to us? And what do you do when you get off track due to market conditions or labor shortages?
Yeah, it's a good question. Right now, one thing we've seen in the industry, we see a lot with our subcontractors is one is kind of grieving, taking on too much work and also the other problems are, you know, some of the jobs they're working on, you know, how are those market conditions affecting their schedules? I think for us, we are definitely only take on, we're only looking at the opportunities that really make sense for us and we feel like that we can be a strong partner. The K through 12 market, our market sector for us is a large market sector and it's, again, there's a lot of passion here. We have had a tremendous amount of success. So my answer is, is we're taking on, we want to try to partner with the right clients and we feel like, you know, this is a great program that we have a lot of expertise and I think we'll be here to support you from day one. The people in this room, we're not overworked on, we have a dedicated staff. The staff you see here will be here from the end. I don't know if I didn't talk really about my role and our, really understanding our roles. Patrick here is helping us with the pre-construction side for the next, I mean, he'll be working with us for the next six, nine, 12 months. We'll have Colonel who has some active construction projects, but we're engaging him in at a weekly basis. My role is really to be, I'm your client advocate. I'm here to ensure from day one through closeout, warranty and beyond, ensure that everything we promised in our RFP in this interview, that I make sure that we deliver for you.
And Jim is coming off a building program now, so it's nice because we can engage him in pre-construction as well. So, yeah. And Colonel, same with Colonel, it's good timing because he can be engaged with the pre-construction activities as well.
Yeah, I'm wrapping up a few projects right now, so I'm going to have time available for this one for sure.
Thank you.
Good. I just have a couple of questions. One of them refers back to the subcontractors. That's pretty important. We talked about the community and their vote and not only their support, but if we can supply some jobs for them also. Bear with me, I don't, we haven't been through this process before. When you pick contractors, subcontractors, what's our input level? Are the local folks weighted a little bit or giving us some sort of discretion?
So we've worked with a couple of different clients that they've had a similar thing. So kind of the process, first as far as the weighted component, we can work with the school district. We've had a couple clients that we've dealt with that had, you know, depending on if they lived in the city, if they were part of the school district or they're part of the county but maybe not a part of the school district, they could have a weighted discount. Again, these aren't deep discounts, but it could give them a 1% and it was weighted by anything between, you know, 0 to 100,000, 100,000, 250,000, 250,000 to 500,000. And there's been weighted scales. I haven't personally, I know we have clients that have had those scales. I haven't personally had that experience, but that is something that we can look at. As far as the actual bidding process, you know, again, there's a lot of upfront work that we try to do, especially when localness is such an important, and it usually is for most school districts, is to get that local involvement. We do a lot of work, like I was trying to explain earlier, with the subcontractor events and getting them and right-scoping the projects. Kind of forgot my train of thought.
I'll share a couple of examples too from Winfield that we had. This is early 2021, same type of process and they had some local participation, what we're focusing on. And so as we went through, we were bidding on kind of three projects on different campuses at the same time. And as we got through in any certain division of the scope of work, if there was a local bidder that was a little premium, we were just open book about that with the Board of Education and in some cases they wanted to, you know, it was a couple thousand bucks. Okay, yeah, we would rather work with the local firms, you know, keeping those dollars in the district, that makes sense. Others were, you know, maybe a 50,000 or 100,000 dollar premium then, you know, but again, we're just going to be open book about it and we can see all the backup and make that decision together.
I have a couple of other examples I just thought of. So Francis Howell, I mentioned that, you know, they're in the St. Louis area, but St. Charles County is very important to them. So they were, with the bidding documents, there was an affidavit that they had to fill out and had several questionnaires, a percentage of, you know, workmanship that was in the county and there were several different questionnaires they had to fill out that was part of the bid form. And that was to help dissect, you know, how much workmanship they had, how much office works. So that was an example, as well as in your front-end bidding documents, so your front-end specifications that'll be with your drawings, we have a whole section of, there are 12 to 14 different types of criteria technically that can be, to be considered not the low bid, but the low, most qualified bid. And some of those have local components that can be an emphasis that you put in your bidding documents.
So when you talked about kind of scaling projects, depending on the number of sites and buildings and so at that point, are we able to, now bear with me, are we able to give you some contractors' information so those packages get out to them?
Yeah, absolutely. We love, and that's part of the process is we would ask for also recommendations of, you know, who's really supported the school for the last three decades or whatever. you know, who's really supported the school for the last three decades or whatever, we can ask for those recommendations. And then usually what we will do is work and draft up these scopes of work where we may break up electrical into three different pieces, we could draft it up and review with the district and the design team to make sure, there's a lot of strategy that goes into that, is however you write the scope. So we would work with you to, this is what we would recommend to make sure you guys kind of agree with that strategy.
Thank you. Another question, some of this, a lot of this is going to have warranties. Do you all stay on after the project is done as far as communicating if we have an issue with something that is broken down after you've gone?
Oh yeah, so we, yeah, you'll have a one-year warranty. We have a dedicated warranty program there. We have a website, it's s.wilson.warranty.com I believe. We have a five people, a five-person warranty group that anytime that you have an issue, a lot of our clients is, you end up building such a great partnership with the, you know, the construction team that you called in and we're jumping on it, but we also have a dedicated warranty group and warranty website that you can log in information very quickly, but you can also go to our project team and we're on top of it, you know, immediately.
And your, a lot of your equipment will have its own warranties also.
Yeah.
Your elevator will have a pretty long warranty, any HVAC equipment, they all have separate warranties. So that'd be, usually they're my years-ish.
Thank you.
I guess thinking everything that we've always done here before, I guess we just meet with the architects and design it and build it. So going through this, this process, you know, off the bat, people asking, why are you doing this? Why are you spending the money, you know, or the board we get at, you know, everybody looks at us, we're spending the district's money. Tell us, tell me why this is a better idea than any other way we've ever done before.
I think really, my, my experience is you're getting the opportunity to select a partner and there's going to be, yes, you could have bid it out and take the low bid and traditionally we have all kinds of data. We do a lot of hard bid work as well, then we bid projects, bid school projects, but not everybody does construction management. So we have a lot of data that seems like, a lot of times when you have that traditional model, there is more of the, it's black and white, there's no gray, there's no coordination that's been done, you know. Not to say, I mean, architects are good or bad, there's always going to be issues and there seems to be a lot of conflict and there ends up being a lot of costs that happen, you know, after the fact. I think we have data that shows that our input and the value that we can provide the district and the level of looking at change orders and some of the costs after the fact are, you know, much more economical. And honestly, the, a lot of times the design bid build type of relationship, it can be either really good or really bad in our experience and I think usually with a CMAR, you have the right, the right company with the right approach and right expertise level that know it is, I've had these last several years and my personal experience in these last several years, the experiences I've, in partnerships I've developed with our clients and even the architects is so much better than anything in the past of a hard bid. I don't know, Amy, if you have other thoughts or?
Yeah, so Francis Howell is a good example, Horner Architects, tons of schoolwork, that's all they do. They had, they were very traditional, had never used the C E O. I've been, I've been calling on Horner Associates for 25 years and could not get them to go construction management. Recommend it to any of their clients. So Francis Howell, that's a rod issue, they want to go construction management at risk and Mark Reuther from Horner calls me and he goes, "We've never done this before." He goes, "We're really worried, you know, that, you know, you're going to run over us" and, and I would tell you to call Mark Reuther, like, I mean, we, we've just had such a great experience and, and now he's going around saying the praises of construction management and, you know, just we've, we've become partners with them. And, you know, the other thing, Jack, I think that really, and we've talked about this ad nauseam, but having a building expert onboard during design is really where you're going to get bang for your buck. Because like Jack said, you know, at the same time that we were getting going on, Francis Howell were under construction, Horner and Associates, the same architect, bid a project up at Orchard Farms, had a, it was a $50 million program and they did not have a construction manager, they were $30 million over budget. And so having that, working side by side with them and, and having this pricing that we'll have within weeks of getting whatever drawings they have right now, I don't know where, where they are, probably schematic design, I'm not sure, but we'll be able to put numbers together within weeks of getting that information so that everybody knows where we are and if we have a problem, we're going to resolve it as a team. But we, letting them go design right now, every single project that we've seen hard bid has been over budget. So just having that input sooner rather than later will save everybody a lot of heartache and headache.
So I have, I guess a couple more questions in relation to the local contractors. Do you guys in the negotiations with those contractors, like if you miss a bid out and the local comes back $2,000 more than, you know, someone that's St. Louis or something, do you negotiate with the locals or is that left up to, is the bid final or do you come back and say, hey, $2,000 less, we'll do it with you?
No, the way the process, the process works is we'll put out invitations of bid, like you normally would. We'll have our front end documents, we have our plans and specifications, I have, you know, like specific bid forms, we'll have our schedule, we'll have a scope of work, it's all the information for them to look at. We'll go through a bidding process. What will happen is they'll have, each contractor and supplier will have to turn in a sealed bid in an envelope to a predetermined location, usually here at the school, and they'll be due at a certain time. If they're not shown up, so then what'll happen is we'll partner with the school, sometimes the architects as well. Usually over a Zoom meeting, what we'll do is each, each scope of work from concrete through every trade, what we'll do is open those envelopes and we have a form we fill out is we go through, you know, if we have four bids, we go through A, B, C concrete, they had the bid form, they had the bid bond, they have this, they have that, go through it. And basically it's publicly read so everybody can see where the numbers lie. However, what's really valuable about this process, I talked about, the front ends, there's 12 or 14 different company qualifications we put out there that can be considered a low complete bid. So what we will do is interview all of the, you know, usually the top two or three bidders, we'll interview them to make sure they have the manpower, they bid per the schedule, they bid per the scope of work, they have a full understanding of it and we'll vet through that. And then usually depending if we decide to do a weighted system, we'll engage, we'll make recommendations to the school district and usually this, you know, usually you guys will accept the recommendations, but if there's a, for instance, that somebody's 1% higher and the school district really wants to pay the $3,000, we can probably get through that loophole of making that selection. But we will take sealed bids, open them, read them out loud, interview everybody, we'll make recommendations of who to make the award to and then we'll go through that process.
Okay. And then you talked about some about your, I guess how soon you know you've become over budget. So right now we're in a drought, but if it was to rain for two straight weeks and you have to pay overtime because you're working weekends, causes us to go over budget. How does that, how soon do you know that? Is that counted far when you're planning, you know, your, your bid and do those companies that bid that price, you know? So my dad's a bricklayer, so it's not uncommon for him to work on weekends because, you know, it rains throughout the week, can't work, blow freezing, can't work. So does a company make the bid and that's the price they're stuck at or talk about that some?
Yeah, we can talk. There's several different examples. So the bricklayer example, one thing we would look at is we look at the schedule and one thing that we try not to do is if we know that we're going to be laying block through the wintertime, we don't tell the bidders to assume the winter conditions or assume the tempting because they can, numbers will be all over the board. They, nothing will be apples, apples. So what we will work with is, you know, in a certain situation, we have to do the block in the gym over the wintertime is that we're going to recommend, you know, through, we're going to do our, we have a lot of cost history, we've had a lot of these different experiences that we're going to recommend potentially some contingency for winter conditions or we know that due to manpower or whatever reasons or if we're doing a lot of work, you know, concrete work in the springtime, you're going to have probably some soil conditions, you're going to have some rainy conditions that we'd recommend some contingency or allowances to guard against that, but not have bidders try to bid different amounts that you're trying to compare apples and oranges. So that's another big part of the process is, and usually there's a construction contingency too, because there's always going to be, especially in additions and renovations, no matter how great of a job is us as a construction team and the architects go through and try to survey how to connect to these buildings, there's always going to be something that pops up. So we'll recommend a small contingency for unknowns or unforeseen's and then anything, again, it's a very transparent process, something comes up, we'll work through the design team, the district for approval to use those.
Okay. And if, you know, things work out well, I guess my question is, what's the contingency rate? Five percent, 10% of the project or?
We try not to throw a, I mean, that's kind of a common 5%. So probably early on when we start the budgeting, we might start at 10% because you are months or a year away from having your design detailed, but as you get further along in design, those contingencies tighten up. But again, we try not to look at it's 5% contingency all the time for construction. We look at the complexities of the projects, the sequencing, the schedule. We try not to throw this blank contingency at it that we have thought through it as a partner. You know, again, your money is our money. That philosophy is, you know, not over protecting ourselves, but protecting ourselves.
Okay. And then should you come back under budget, is that?
Usually there's savings. There's savings clauses there and sometimes there's shared savings, you know, some of, a lot of clients will like shared savings to have, you know, it helps generate us working together, but sometimes full savings back to the district, there's different, different savings clauses.
Okay.
And the allowances too.
Oh, yeah.
We don't spend those allowances. If we have like a winter condition allowance, that just rolls back to you if we don't spend it, so.
And we try, and not to speak over you, but we also not, try not to hold those allowances away till the end of the project is that once we get past a risk point or a milestone, it's like, all right, we got through the winter, we have $46,000, let's figure out how you can reinvest this into your community. So we tried to offset, if we do have an allowance that we do recommend, try to give it back as soon as possible so you can figure out how we can use the money.
The other thing too I had, to what Jack said, is we'll build the schedule with, you know, a certain number of weather days built in.
Yes.
And we'll call that out in our TNP amendment, you know, exhibit. And so we'll kind of follow the, you know, weather patterns and the averages, right? And we'll build those in and then obviously if there's an anomaly, we'll identify that in the weekly meetings and make sure everyone's saying the same thing, but we will build some of that in.
And that's part of the bid schedule too, that the bidders bid. We use NOAA information that a lot of local airports will tell you how much rain to expect and we use all that dead data to extrapolate where we're working and how much to expect and build it in the schedule.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Josh was just talking about staying on budget and on time. If we've got a subcontractor that just doesn't show up after they've bid it out, what is your contingency plan for that?
So there's probably several different, several different avenues. Again, manpower is definitely issues with certain contractors, it's being proactive. I mean, we have clauses in our contract that we can take over the work and there's different scenarios. I'm trying to think of a specific example. Can you think of anything, Patrick?
Well, SDI, we recommend subcontractor default insurance as well as another program that we typically use on bigger, complex projects. And so that, the reason that that's there in place is to help protect the district and ourselves from a subcontractor defaulting. And so at that point then we're able to send those, it's a 48-hour notice and then we're able to then go solicit another available subcontractor and get them working on site to keep the project moving forward.
Yeah, I think just through the bidding process, that's a big part of the interview process, but you never know what's going to happen, is everything could go great in the interview, there's a lot of promises made and they've looked at the schedule and they're going to provide this amount of manpower for this phase and this phase. Again, things pop up, so, I mean, us as your, your manager, I mean, we're, I mean, our superintendents are updating schedules like the three or four week look-aheads, we're tracking stuff daily. Things do get out of whack and we have to use our expertise and sometimes even if we have to go to our contractual level, we'll work through that to make sure that we can work with them or sometimes we'll try to do things, can we help partner or we know somebody else that may have some resources, you know, or some manpower for the next few weeks, can we help bring them in so we don't have a big contractual issues?
Have you used the SDI before?
We have once.
Yeah.
Who pays for it unfortunately?
It's part of our fees or it's, there's a, it's a self, instead of bonding, instead of paying the cost to have, you know, a lot of times under certain values and a lot of risk, you'll have P and P bonds or performance of payment bonds, but we have a self-insured program that applies to the entire program. We had a project in the state of Washington, Seattle, on a government project, six or seven years ago, we had to utilize it, then we had an electrician basically bankrupt. So, but the one thing nice about the self-insurance program, you know, if you ever have some sort of like major default situation like that with a contractor, the bonding companies have to get involved and it could take 60, 90 days or whatever, 120 days for resolutions in order to, how much cost and how much impact and who they're going to bring onboard. The, with the self-insurance program, we're basically, if something did happen, again, there's a lot of protection put in place that we vet through these contractors and make sure that if, it's not that it can't get accepted, that if we know there's some risks, that they may be not financially strong, how can we support them, make sure they don't get into problems? But yeah, so there's a lot of protections there. One time we've had to use it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That savings clause you're talking about, is that something that's, was bid already?
That'd be part of the contract negotiations.
Okay.
It's going to be part of the next steps.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Of all your projects in the last couple of years, how many completed on time? Like what percentage?
Oh boy. School projects specifically? A hundred percent.
Yeah.
They're always going to be done.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. That.
The materials and labor.
Yeah, I mean, that, we have, I mean, that and like even our retail clients when, I mean, those dates you can't, I mean, we got to do whatever, we got to figure out to work through those dates to get them turned over on time.
That's good.
Anyone else?
And how many of you have some other questions?
You know, budget's been an issue, but the one thing like Amy said, or we talked about earlier, the thing, earlier tonight is coming onboard within a few weeks, we're going to do a full-blown, I mean, this is a program level, we're going to have a full-blown, we have a model built that, I mean, from pounds of rebar and the footings and, I mean, we just know the size of a room and we're going to have no, there's going to be 13,000 pounds of rebar, there's going to be this, that and the other. We have a full-blown detailed quantity-based budget within a few weeks and we'll know immediately if what is in the, in the bond or, you know, what's in your budget matches kind of the program and your needs and wants. And what we'll do is if there are issues and there are, you know, depending how the district came about, some of their budgeting and how old the information is, we will do everything to prioritize and it's kind of back to the Pattonville example is, you know, there are things that they were a little bit over that they didn't count for, you know, being a six-year program, they're kind of looking at the next year or two and we're looking at escalation over several years. And we're looking at how can we prioritize those projects and make sure, and then also things that we're looking at is, is, I mean, we're a very conceptual level budgeting right now, but as design tightens up, those numbers tighten up and contingencies will potentially tighten up. And, yeah, I think it's, you know, we're going to know immediately and we'll work through as a partner how to prioritize or how can we think about, you know, what may be a major schedule issue that's causing a six-month gap, how can we tighten that up because, you know, it's, you know, the longer construction lasts, the more expensive it is. So that expertise will help navigate those budget issues.
And that's why they call it construction management at risk.
Risk, yeah.
We give you a GMP.
Yep.
It's, it's transparent, it has some contingencies for things like that, but again, that's your money. If you don't spend it, you don't spend it. But again, that's your money, if you don't spend it, you don't spend it. So that is, that's your guarantee, that's guaranteed maximum price.
Do you think we're having trouble completing all the projects we stated in our bond?
You know, it's, again, we don't have really any, we'll need some preliminary square footages and quantities. It's hard to tell on paper, you know, in a manner of going through what was given to the, the community. I know there's a lot in there, it's not saying it's undoable. I think is, so we had some preliminary information, we could really dial that in and see where you guys are at. And I think really prioritize what are the, the needs and wants, and hopefully you get everything. But again, without being part of the original budgeting and not knowing some actual, you know, this kind of rough square footages, it's hard to promise you here if you are or are not within budget.
Yeah, and the problem, you know, with some of these bond issues is they, you're setting the number a full year.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, I mean, KRJ has been doing schoolwork for a long time. So I would imagine that, you know, they've taken that into account, but that is, we've seen that where, you know, they set, they set the, the bond in 2018, you know, they, they passed the bond issue, and then they, you know, COVID hits, so they, you know, stop. And then they're getting going again in 2021, and they're, you know, and we've had in that time, in some cases, you know, between 30 and 400% increases depending on what the, and so they're just out of whack, you know, from, from the get-go. And, you know, I, I, I feel for these districts that, you know, had that happen, they, they've set numbers that are just unrealistic based on what's going on right now.
And that's not all districts, or those are just certain situations.
Yeah, 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 it's not all. But again, it's, it's a challenge, so hopefully we can get onboard quick and get, get the number, go, numbers going and see where we are.
Well, I'm optimistic, COVID's over, everything's going to be okay.
Those of us that just had COVID. Well, thank you so much. I know we've taken all of it, more of your time than you did, you know, but we really appreciate it.
Thank you for answering our questions.
Thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And Will, Jeff, do you want to email that website?
Yeah, I'll send it to you, Dr. Taylor.
Okay.
Thank you all, great questions, and it's nice presenting you, very much.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Bill Geising.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Bill, Eric.
Hi, Eric, good to meet you.
Hey, Bill Geising.
Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you, David.
Hi, nice to meet you, I'm Jerry.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Colin, good.
Jamie, nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm Jerry.
Nice to meet you.
Josh, good.
Jamie, nice to meet you.
Good. Martha Reese.
Hi, Jerry Eesel. Nice to meet you.
Hello there, Martha Reese.
Jerry.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Matt, okay.
Hi, Matt, Martha Reese.
Remember their names here. Follow them. There's two Matts, I think, right? No pill.
Is everyone ready? Do you guys have a, an agenda or a format, or just want us to?
We've got the RFP.
Okay.
But yeah, I mean, whenever you guys are ready, then we'll ask some questions at the end if that's okay.
Okay, well, I brought the RFP as well, and, but at the same time, I want to, I prefer to keep it informal, if that's okay with you guys, so if you want to interject, by all means, feel free to stop me. And I'll try and follow the order that the present, the proposals are in. But if I jump around, or if you wanted me to jump back, we certainly can, so.
I, I brought some hard copies, would anybody like a hard copy?
Oh, is, is he going to put something on?
Is it going to be on here?
Yeah, one, and I do have one hand now.
Oh, here.
Thank you.
Oh, I didn't read it.
Well, I don't know if we can see what he's, anything's on. See, but he does have several links, so I can leave my, my, Martha. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, we're sharing.
Okay, well, I want to get started and give you guys some introductions on who we are. And we'll go down the list here, and I'll, I'll start. My name's Colin Rogers, I'm Vice President of Brockmiller Construction. I've been with Brockmiller for about 12 years now, and I live in Farmington, Missouri. I also have a few other ties to the area. I'm the President of Mid East Missouri Contractors Association. And we represent all of the contractors in nine counties, St. Jen is one of them, that represent companies that employ union carpenters and labors. And St. Jen is one of those counties. We also give away scholarships to St. Jen County as well as eight other counties. I'm also a publicly elected official in St. Jen County. I serve on the Wolf Creek Fire District Board, which covers about 100 square miles of St. Genevieve County. And I have worked on, I've been fortunate enough to work on several projects in your community. I just finished working on, most recently, your last two water towers for your public water supply district, and the third one a few years back by the Progress Center. I did the Progress Sports Complex Design Build Project. I ran the construction management risk project for the water park here in town. I've been fortunate enough to do several projects at the jail, and most recently completed some work up at the fairgrounds. And I've also done some work here at the school district. I did your last HVAC upgrade as well as interior renovations to your main entrance and commons here, so. And this is Bill Geising.
My name's Bill Geising, I'm the President of Brockmiller Construction. I've been with the company for 26 years. My family, I'm fifth generation in the area. My family goes back to Farmington from the late 1870s. And I also have a little bit of history with St. Jen, St. Genevieve. One of the first projects I did in St. Genevieve was the Community Center. Rick Pyatt was our superintendent back in 1998, 99. I haven't done as much as Colin has. I did do a project for the school district a few years ago, window replacement. But have done a lot of schoolwork and done a lot of CMAR work, and looking very forward to the opportunity to be able to work with St. Jen again.
I'm Matt Franklin, Project Manager, Estimator, and Project Engineer for what this project would be. Grew up in Bismarck, where I currently am actually on the school board at Bismarck there. Been with Brockmiller for going on five years.
Five years.
Five years this October. Had a wide array of projects in my portfolio that I've done with Brockmiller. Have a history in civil engineering, that's what my degree is in. Went through Missouri University of Science and Technology.
Well, I'm Matt Pig, I'm a Project Superintendent for Brockmiller. Graduated in 97 and went to work for Brockmiller the next day. So I've been on and off with them for 25 years, 26 years, I guess, maybe now. But I live on the west side of the county, right where it makes the point, Three Rivers and D Highway. A lot of you guys probably don't get out that direction. But we got a business, we also started out that way, so we got a business in, in the county. It's a Turquoise Dreams, it's a, a event center. And we have birthday parties, anniversary parties, stuff like that. But right now I'm working down at Case Jefferson School, pretty good-sized project. It's really good to work down there. I've got a beautiful wife and three kids, so would love to, would love to work here.
A little bit about our company history, we're going on 100 years in business. We work in predominantly a nine-county area, which is, we like to say, a 90-mile radius of Farmington, so that all of our guys can go home and every night and not have to travel too far. We will stretch out to upwards of 16 counties, but that's pretty much as far as we go. We've got 70 employees right now, those are union ironworkers, carpenters, and labors. And we self-perform anything that you can perform with those trades. And we're what I would consider probably the largest builders still in this area. And we, we self-perform quite a bit of work as opposed to most of our counterparts, our competition. K through 12 is our bread and butter. We probably, that probably makes up 75% of our portfolio in any given year. And within that, as far as delivery methods, CMAR is becoming very prominent. And we've done a lot of that work since it's become legal in the state of Missouri. But we still do a lot of hard bid work. And that's where we see, you know, a big advantage to owners to hire us as construction managers are, we still have a very sharp pencil when it comes to hard bidding projects. And within this document, there is a, a bid tab sheet that we put together of the last local proj, or the last umpteen projects that we bid, hard bid around here. It's in this green one towards the back, it looks like this. And you'll be able to see, this is what our most recent track record is on hard bid projects. And some of our competition is in there. We rarely get beat on hard bid projects, and we, we think that that's because subs like to work with us. We have a, a very robust ability to self-perform work, and we get aggressive when we bid our projects. We get into the, the details, and we like to think we work harder at getting those projects than our competition. Moving on to CMAR experience, so as Bill and I briefly mentioned, we've, we've got some CMAR experience. We've, we've done work down at Jackson, which you may or may not have been a part of, those projects down there. And since then, we've done work as construction managers for Sykesville, the water park, your county jail is construction management at risk. We're also doing similar work for North County School District as construction managers, as well as St. Francis County and Mineral Area College. So do you want me to kind of explain our take on construction management, or are you guys, okay? So stop me if I, I get, I'm, it's kind of nerdy, I'm kind of passionate about this. But when I got out of college, I went to work for JD Dunn Construction. At the time, they were the sixth largest general contractor in the United States. They kind of made the move with the rest of the market to do construction management agency work. And agency work was you would hire the construction manager, and they would have a contract with you. And they would have no other liability. They did not contract with any of the other contractors. Those prime contractors, which what we call our subs, would contract with you, the owner. And the state of Missouri, along with other states like Kansas, said that you cannot self-perform any work as a construction manager. Well, about six or seven years ago, the legislative body in the state of Missouri said, there's a better way that we can offer public entities a delivery method for their projects. And that was to come up with construction management at risk, which we've been doing for 100 years in the private sector as negotiated general contractor. And when we work with First Take Community Bank, or Parkland Health Center, or any of the private businesses, we go in and do exactly what you are able to do now. And there's added benefit to that for you because you get to award a project to somebody based off of qualifications, not just price. So with construction management at risk, what I like to say is now you, it's, you're hiring a negotiated general contractor, not a briefcase contractor. When you were doing construction management agency, you hired a briefcase contractor. If you're hiring a construction manager at risk, and they don't have the ability to self-perform a wide majority of the work, then you're missing the opportunity. And we do that. We've still bid on a lot of the work, and we get a lot of the work, but we're also able to go out and solicit work. So we have a very wide following of local contractors and vendors that I'll get on here in a minute. But we're able to tap into those resources that you already have right here. And they know how we work, and we know how they work, and they will help develop your projects alongside us. So it's, it's more of a team approach, whereas CM agency is, is not. It's, you're out there, you have nothing, you're, you have no liability, it's, it's all the owner's liability. Well, that's why they call it construction management at risk, because it's our risk. We contract with all of the subcontractors and vendors, and it's our liability to get the job done. With, whether it's liquidated damages or bond, we carry the bond, it's ultimately, at the end of the day, it's our responsibility. So we're in essence, if you were to hire us, we're partnering with you guys to be part of your, your bond issue. So your success is our success, and our failure, failure is your failure, and vice versa. So it's in our best interest to succeed for you guys, because when Paul Brockmiller was still working here, he would always tell people, there are two things, the superintendent is the most important person on the job, and that's Matt Pig, and he's one of the best ones we got. You won't find anyone better, and he lives in your county. The second thing is, is we can't afford to have a bad job, because as I told you, we work in nine to 16 counties. And so superintendents, no other superintendents, and word gets around. And, and, you know, same for, same for you guys, I'm, I'm sure you know Gary Nelson, and Gary Stolzer, and Jason Arnold, and Dale Probst, and the Bowmans, and, you know, we just, we can't afford to have a bad job, or we won't stay in business. And the biggest reason why we've been able to be successful is because we count on repeat business. And when, we've been able to do that in the hard bid market, and now we're seeing a lot of success in the construction management risk market doing the same thing. So that's one, that's our take on construction management at risk. I really think it's a benefit for you guys, because the other part of this is, you just, you just passed upon the issue with several different projects. Historically, you would hire an architect, and they would bid out every single one of those projects. So you could, if you have 12 projects, you might have 12 general contractors. Now you get to streamline that, you have one point of contact, and we're there from beginning of design, all the way to closeout. And this by-the-numbers sheet has some really good numbers on it, and one of them down at the bottom is KRJ projects. We've got 17, 72 KRJ projects totaling $110 million. Nobody knows KRJ better than Brockmiller Construction. We know their strengths and their weaknesses as a construction manager. That is an added benefit to not only you, but to them. So we like, we like using that because it's, it, I truly believe construction management at risk makes our life easier, it makes your life easier, and it makes your architect's life easier. And it's more of a team approach as opposed to every man for himself. So is, anybody have any questions on the construction management at risk? Kind of, it is, it's fairly new, that's why I ask, but I'll get into the, I'll get into the.
It's who you asked to.
Yeah. And don't, and, and it is new to a lot of people, and you guys are actually a perfect fit for this construction man, and I applaud you guys for doing it, because I'm sure, you know, there's not a whole lot of people that have done it yet, but everybody that has done it has really thought that this was the best way to do it. And I'll get into next, kind of how we, how we approach it. So on a typical project, matter of fact, in your green sheet, there is a, I, I put together this flow chart, and, you know, don't pay any attention to the numbers, but I kind of took the projects that you guys had listed in your, your publication that you put out. And just to kind of show you, this is how I would attack your construction management at risk in general. I would divide up all of these projects, and I would say, based off historical and current data, here's what I think these, each one of these projects is going to range at. And then we would sit down with you and KRJ and say, help us prioritize which of these projects are more important. Which one takes the longest to design? Which one has the longest lead times on materials? Which one do you need to get out the door first? Which one has to be done during summer school? Those type items. And then, this is our, our baseline roadmap. So you get KRJ onboard, they will issue us 50 to 75% drawings. We will take those drawings and refine the square foot number that we started with, and we'll give it out to Dale Probst and Jason Arnold. Jason Arnold. And we'll say, how would you build this gym? So that we can figure out how we would set the steel. We would do the same thing with bound. We give it to local subs that know the market that we're in now, pricing wise. Because the market's very volatile. And nobody's got a better touch on what, where we're at right now than us and our subs that are local. So, at 50 to 75%, we develop a, a more detailed budget. And we're still making some assumptions. We're also now using these drawings to get involved in the project and see, what could we offer as suggestion as alternates? What could we offer as suggestions for trading out building materials? Does a block wall, is it cheaper than studs and brick? Does metal studs, can you get metal stud trusses quicker than you can get bar joists and deck? Those types of things. So, we're, we're in the architect's ear, giving him opinions that he can use to best define your drawings. So that when we bid them out, we hit the ground running. So, once we get to 95% drawings, now we go back and we refine our numbers. And the 95% drawings usually comes out a few weeks before we're ready to bid. And when we update our numbers on the 95% set of drawings, we know with some certainty where the bids are going to come in before you ever bid it out. And there's no architect that can tell you that. And what we were seeing before CMAR was prevalent was, these architects were bidding out these jobs, and they were coming in 10%, 20% over budget. Because they didn't have the means to see what is the market in this area. Now you have that. So, we're doing this in St. Francis County right now. We've bid out four of, I think, the eight projects that we're doing. And every single one of them, it, we know what the numbers are before we, before we bid it out. So, we know there's not going to be any real surprises. Then if there are, we still have the ability to control cost across the board. So, we can identify alternates, and contingencies, and allowances. And we can kind of keep these on the shelf as we go through these projects. And lock, as each project gets bid out, and we lock in those variables, now we know what we're down to. And we whittle away at it. I call it, it's kind of a funnel approach, the way we bid each job. And we do each job the same way. So, at the end of this, you might get to, if you might tell us that the athletics projects are the least important. So, that'll be the last thing we bid out. And we might get down to it, and you might be $50,000 short. And we say, you can't afford to do the fencing. Or, you might get to the end of it, and you might have $250,000 left over. And you say, can we go back to the early childhood school and add these basketball goals, or bleachers? Or you may say, we actually, we have so much money left over, we'd like to do another job altogether. So, you can go back sometimes and accept alternates that weren't accepted. Or you can add the scopes on jobs. Or you can add jobs altogether. And we use this as a roadmap to track all of that. And when we bid these projects out, we're constantly updating it to see where we're at. So, at any given point in time, you guys can look at this and see where you're at on each individual project, and the entire Prop SG as a whole. So, you'll know where your overruns are and underruns are. And there'll be some. But we take this approach to manage the costs at every step of the way. So, some of the other items that I've included in here, just to show you how we run a normal job, is I gave you guys some of the information on our schedules. We do detailed schedules. We have, this is what our schedules look like. We do one for each job. We can do one for the whole Prop SG. And then behind that, this is in the blue packet. Then, this is our meeting minutes. This is a set of minutes from Matt Pig's job that we're doing down in Cape Jefferson Elementary. And with every one of those minutes, we, we like to meet biweekly with you guys, the owner, and the design team, and some of the major subs at the time. Matt will also develop a three-week look ahead schedule. So that we know what's coming up in the immediate future. We also document all the RFIs, which are called requests for information. We do the same for submittals, which basically, we have to submit on the materials that we're going to install and get approved by the architects and engineers before we can install them. Then we also have weather days that we track on a daily basis. And then we also track cost proposals and the change orders. Use cost proposal logs and change orders follow that. So, there's also another tab in here that explains how we do the budgets. There is one in here that is for St. Francis County roof replacement that I won't get into. But basically, it shows you where we did our 95% versus where the bids come in. And we were, we were under 10%. We were able to save them money. There's several examples, such as that in the packet. Going into the fees and the matrix, I don't know if you had a chance to look at our matrix, if you had any questions on it. How we divided up the matrix ourselves, we felt was the most economical. The pre-construction fees, I always put a pre-construction fee in there, but I've never had to actually enforce it. So, basically, if you didn't do any of those projects, we would just ask you to cover our costs of $15,000. And that's never happened. And I don't see that happen on this project. The rest of the fees were the GC and the CMAR fee. That is what those fees are. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that matrix. But there's no other fees involved in that. We don't charge for the general liability. There's no subcontractor default insurance. That's why we have a bond. And we carry the bond, and we charge it to you at cost. We don't mark it up. We charge it to you at cost. And by the way, our performance and payment bond fees are the lowest that the state will allow. And the reason that that is, is because that is a, a measurement of your finances as a company. And so, our finances are such that we are given the lowest rate allowed by the state of Missouri to bond your projects, which is an instant savings to you guys as a school district. So, whereas, you know, our bond might be $100,000. Nobody's going to be able to beat that. You're not giving up anything on that by, by going with Brockmiller Construction. Local participation. It's in the by the numbers handout I gave you guys. But I wanted to point out that in the last 10 years, we've compiled 50 local subcontractors and vendors from St. Francis County and St. Genevieve County totaling $86 million. And as a company, Brockmiller Construction employs not quite 20% residents from St. Genevieve County. Matt Pig, Josh Pinkley, John Van Der Haar, Pete Bollinger, who lives up by the fairgrounds, Michael Mills, Brian Stam, Donna Ringwald. And unfortunately, we just had probably four or five of our most tenured superintendents retire that live in St. Gene County. Chuck McHearan, Paul Amston, Norm Amston, Mark Rounden, Jeff Fink. So, we alone as a company have a handful of people that are key players in our company's success that live in your, your, your county. And we use a lot of, the, the local subs that we're going to use on this project, we're not just using on this project. We're using them right now. We use them every day. I talk to, I talk to them every, they're, they're some of the best subs around. And we will continue to do that. We've always done that. And I bet if you asked them, they would tell you the same thing. So, they know, again, they know how we work. We know how they work. We have a lot of fun working with these guys. And they're top notch. And I think they would probably lend to, my experience has been, if, if a subcontractor comes from out of town, or a contractor comes from out of town, and they want to work with some of the locals, they, they probably can. But if the familiarity's not there, there's probably going to be a price attached to it. And, and it usually doesn't go as well as if somebody that you've got some synergy with. So, in addition to that, the other thing to think about is, all of the other local subs and vendors that we use that touch St. Gene County, or maybe one other county over, they all employ people that live in St. Gene County. Raider Mechanical, Crystal Eden Cooling, Associated Sheet Metal, Froderberger Concreteers. They may not be based out of St. Gene County, but they, they do employ workers that actually will work on your job, and will bring home money back into your county. So. A few other items. Warranty. We're just down the road. So, if you have a problem, we're not going to leave you with it. We had, Matt and I were talking, we had a school district call us today about some rails, some rails that were galvanized handrails that, you know, galvanized, material shouldn't rust. And we installed those in 2008, and they rusted through. And so, it's been a few years. And it's out of, clearly out of warranty. It should, the material should have never failed, but it did. But we're going to agree to go back and just help them out on it. Because we know it's not. I had a door on a job that was broken that we did four years ago that we went and fixed last week. The fairgrounds, we, we put new treated lumber up on the demo derby stands. And some of them popped and blistered and curled up. And so, we ran out there a couple days before the fair started and fixed them all.
You did a great job.
Thank you. So, again, it goes back to, one, we can't not help you fix your problems because we can't run from you. And two, we wouldn't want to. There, we have, you know, there are people that when they're gone, they're gone, or they're harder to get a hold of. And that's not us. So, and, you know, in closing too, with, with my comments, I, I can't say enough about these numbers. Our, our K through 12, there's a map that we included in here. I don't know if you guys saw it. But the school map showing, and we've actually, there's a couple districts we need to add on to here. But this shows the K through 12 work that we've done in your area. We've got great experience at K through 12. CMAR experience, we love it. We're excited about it. We take it serious. And local participation, obviously, is huge with us. And I'm sure it is with you guys as well. And KRJ, again, KRJ, I, I don't know that there's anybody that's done as many KRJ jobs as we have. And it goes back a long, long time. I've done several, Bill's done several, and Matt's done some. So, with that, do you guys have any, any questions? Or do you guys have anything to add? Or?
Does anyone?
Well, the, the other thing that Colin and I had talked about beforehand was, we may not be the biggest company that you'll talk to in this process. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. But I will say that I believe that we've got full capabilities of doing this type of project. When you look at a single project standpoint, we did about $17 million new elementary school in Jackson back in 2016. In today's dollars, that's about 20 million. Just about where you are. Now, that was a single project. We have very current experience working with KRJ in a school district on multiple projects. Matt and I both did the Windsor School District project back in 2018. It was about $10 million over two years. It touched all six of their campuses. And it was with KRJ. And like Colin said, you know, I've worked with KRJ every, it was the 26 years that I've been here. And we've got a great relationship with them. Like he said, we kind of know how each other works. And there's a lot to be said for that synergy and that understanding that you have for one another. We kind of feed off each other, and we know how to get things done. And every project is going to be played with a little bit of things that aren't exactly well defined. And we find ways to get through that as a team with them. So, we may not be the biggest, but I think we're definitely qualified. But the other aspect of that is, you're not going to have to go through layers and layers of people, or see different teams throughout the project. I believe it's a, I, I see it as a strength and, or a weakness in other companies that I have worked with in the past, that you won't find here. Here, the person that is going to be responsible for not only the presentation today, but will also be doing all the pre-construction services work. And will be doing all the bidding work. And will be managing the entire process. And will be handling the service will be Colin Rogers. We don't have a marketing team that comes in. This is us, okay? And that marketing team is not going to hand it off to a pre-construction team. And that mark, that pre-construction team is then not going to hand it off to a project management team. And the project management team isn't going to hand it off to a warranty and service team. I've seen that before. But each time you hand it off to someone else, there's a loss of information. And I see the frustration in owners when that happens. They're like, well, I told them during design that we needed this. Oh, well, I wasn't here for design. You know, so they don't take responsibility for it. Here, Colin will be your point of contact throughout the entire process. And I can't say enough about what that means for the continuity in not only making sure that we understand your project, but we carry all those responsibilities through. And then, you don't have to go through layers and layers to get to someone. We're a very flat organization. You see three fifths of our management team, our entire management team, right here. But we've got great support throughout all levels of the organization. Matt and I, as I mentioned, we did the Windsor project with KRJ, $10 million. We did North County, $6 million last year. We've got a lot of assistance within our office. It's not a big office. Only 16 of us, including the five management people. But we do probably $60 to $70 million worth of revenue a year. So, when you're looking at 20 million spread across, across probably a couple of years, that's about 10 million a year. Definitely within our reach, and definitely within our capacity capabilities.
Thank you.
And the other thing I'll say, to piggyback on Colin's statements about local participation, as a small town resident myself, we all are here, we understand how important it is when the constituents in our school district pass funds. How important it is for those funds to have the maximum effect. And when, with Brockmiller Construction, we know that you're probably going to get a greater level of participation throughout every level than you'll see with anybody else. Which means more recycling of those same bond dollars through to local subcontractors, and vendors, and suppliers, and workers, and, you know, whoever else may support the process that Brockmiller and subcontractors do. And so, I hope that's a, a consideration that the board will take in also. Matt, you got anything? Matt's?
Matt, would you, tell them a little bit about the job that you're on now, and how you run that.
So, the Cape Jefferson School is a merge between the city and the school district. And they, they have a community center pool that we're doing, and attaches right on to locker room addition, big gym addition, and some classrooms. So, we are, COVID has brought on many challenges. And I know you guys, school district, and I applaud you for doing what you do. It's, it's, it's very tough. We've taken material, taken material eight months before we need it, stored it on site, site that we don't have to store it on. So, we've done everything we can do. We are going to turn over their classroom, and their cafeteria, their kitchen, which is major feat for us by the time school starts. And we work directly hand in hand with the maintenance people and everybody that's there. And they've been, they've done a good job. So, we'll turn the rest of it over later this year, which will turn out just perfect for us to come here and start this project. But I know you guys sit over there, and I'm at the right hand of all these guys, because I'm the lowest on the total amount here. But you guys are sitting across here seeing a construction company. The reason I'm with these guys, and been with these guys, I've seen them take care of guys who have heart attacks, and get them back, get them back on their feet, and take care of them. I've seen them take care of a guy who's lost his son, and his grandkids in a car accident. They took care of it until they could get himself right and get back to work. That's over 90% why I'm still with this company. You don't understand what that means. When you look at Brockmiller Construction, I'm, I'm here, and I'm with them because they know how to run a business, and take care of family. So.
Thanks, Matt. Matt mentioned something, too, that was a good point, COVID. And the kind of ups and downs of the market, and how we've been dealing with that. And, you know, I don't want to, that's something that needs to be discussed. And I think we've been very fortunate in how we've been able to manage that. There are a few outliers that have been more of a problem than others as far as sectors of the market. Roofing, and now glazing. Some of our local contractors, well, all of our local contractors buy materials from big conglomerates, manufacturers. And what we're seeing in some instances, is they're being held hostage with this material. And so, we've been trying to do everything that we can to protect you as an owner against that. And at the same time, protect our local subcontractors. Because we know that they're doing everything that they can to not be hit with these extra charges. So, what we've, what we've done in the past, it seems to So what we've, what we've done in the past that seems to work pretty well is as soon as we are awarded a project, or in this case, if we award a project, we ask contractors to go ahead and lock in the material, we get them a notice of award right away, and then we ask them to bill for stored material, which is basically, if you can provide a bill sale and a certificate of insurance for where your material is being warehoused, we will pay you for 100% of that material. It may have to sit in a school on campus somewhere in somebody's way, but at least we don't have to worry about a notice that we get the same glass prices are going up 40% in 48 hours, which we, it's happened. Again, we don't, we don't want you guys to be held hostage, and we don't want our local subs to be held hostage, and we don't want to be held hostage. So, but we have had pretty good luck navigating that, and it's all open book, on top of the table, we just tell you about it as it comes, and we try and safeguard ourselves with contingencies and trying to plan in advance to take that out of the equation. The problem is, some of these manufacturers are catching on to that, and they're trying to not honor anything now. But so far, we've had great luck with it, and we haven't seen anybody get hurt, including our owners and our subcontractors. And one of the other things I wanted to point out too about the construction management risk process, once we get to a green light that says, "Okay, our 95% budget is where we think it is, go ahead and bid it out," we will develop what's called scopes of work and some other front-end documents that we give to KRJ, and then we will write the advertisement to bid to give to you guys to advertise in the paper. And we will make sure that you guys get good, that you capture a proper amount of bids for each scope of work. So that's part of our job, is to make sure that you get ample bid coverage on all the scopes of work. And all, a scope of work is basically defined as a major scope of work. So electrical in most cases is a scope of work package. And what that, what we saw happens is, is typically when we are hard bidding a project, we give you a number, and that's it. We use the subs that we use, and you usually don't get much of a say in it. With construction management risk, you guys as the owner have much more say in who gets involved in your projects. So for instance, if you bid out a scope of work and you get five bids, and somebody's bid is from Chicagoville, Indiana, and everybody else is local, you can come in to us and say, "We recommend that you enter into contract with the second contractor who's local." So you guys have a much greater involvement in who all of the contractors are, whereas ordinarily, necessarily, you might not have. And so that's another huge benefit, gives you guys a lot more participation in the process.
And one note about the fees, a lot of projects that are of this nature, they give a defined fee matrix, and they say, "Give us your fee based upon these items here being included in the CM fee, and these things here being included in the GC fee." Since this was kind of an open matrix where the recipients were allowed to say, "I'm going to include these things in my CM and these things in my GC, and then all these other things are going to be included in the scope of work," it puts a little more burden on you as the owner, because a 4% fee from us may be different from a 4% fee from our competition, because they may have twice as much included in that fee as I do, or vice versa. So that was one, that's one thing I would encourage you to take a look at. We tried to align our fee structure with what we typically see, and we think it's very, you know, very complete for what's in that CM fee and GC fee. In other words, you're not going to have any hidden costs from us. The only things that we don't include in our CM fee or GC fee are those things that are really variable based upon the cost of the work and are more applicable to be done in the cost of work, like the hoisting, the lifting, the cleanup, that kind of stuff. So, just one note that you might take a look at there, it's not something that I'm sure you deal with every day, we don't deal with it every day, so it can be very confusing, there's a lot of information in there, but just rest assured that, other than those two fees that we have, you're not going to see extra costs for other items from Brock Miller Construction.
Thank you. Interview before you, we went that line, let everybody ask questions. Of course, you can, everybody can ask what they want, but I thought maybe we'd go the opposite direction.
Thanks. That's very good. Thank you for pointing that out, that is not something I would have thought of, the fee structuring to look at, so thank you very much for pointing that out on my part. I'm going to get my little sheet out since you surprised me with our rehearsal here.
You're ready.
Here we go.
All right.
I can go if you.
No, I'm ready, I'm good. I'm going to go with the easy one though, since I was put on the spot there. How do you plan to keep us informed throughout the process with the updates, us being the Board of Education? What's your process on updating us?
We are more than happy to come to your board meetings. We have done it in the past. Typically, Matt Pig is going to be onsite every day. I will be here weekly. We will have formal meetings every other week with a representative from the school district and your designers. And Matt will have, depending on how you sequence these projects, we will have multiple other superintendents that are onsite every day. So there will always be a presence here, and the packet of some of the meeting documents and the forms and logs, every time we have a meeting every two weeks, we update that and we bring it. And then there's the constant day-to-day. Matt's going to, you know, Matt's going to see Mr. Taylor and Mrs. Fleege on a day-to-day basis, and whoever your maintenance staff is, and they're going to, you guys are going to be best friends. So with school, you know, just the little things from school bus drop-off and pickup and big, scheduling big concrete pours and locking up doors and gates and those types of things. And I will be at, just a phone call away, and I'll be here several times a week, I'm sure, so.
Sounds good.
My question off the sheet, but, so you're, you're wanting to do the CMAR, but you're also wanting to do the general contractor, right? So how do we keep yourself honest if you're bidding on work that you're going to be overseeing as well?
That's a good question. And so that is, that is what I think the state has tried to figure out all this time, how can we do CMAR versus CM agency? And so the state has a very particular set of guidelines on how you have to bid out the work. And we will advertise each bid package, and most of the time, the work that we bid on is general trades work. And sometimes that's concrete, sometimes it's steel, sometimes it's all of the above, and we solicit to our, our competition on that. Sometimes they turn a number, sometimes they don't. I'll tell you one that I'm kind of excited, and I've done this several times, but I'm kind of excited to work with you guys and solicit the folks like Donzy Construction, because I think on some of these projects, as a GC, that would not necessarily draw interest from Donzy. But if we can dovetail this into some smaller packages, that might fit perfect into the type of work that they're doing, and that's great by us, that's what we're here for. So we always solicit our competition and other people, and we try and break down the packages so that it's better for you all as a district. But we don't always get other numbers on the packages that we submit, but we do submit on those packages.
So those package, I'm sorry, those packages, or the bid that we turn in for like carpentry or steel, we have to do a sealed bid turned in with all the other bids, so.
That was my next question, so was that read publicly as well?
They're all opened in front of you, so here's Brock Miller's number, here's Donzy's number, here's Keefner's number, they're all right there, and then you get to make the joint decision on, here's who we want to.
Yeah, it's all heads up, we'll turn, we will open up and read all the bids out loud except for ours.
So is Matt acting more for CMAR or for GC?
He is, well, it depends on what it is and what project it is. Like I said, we will more than likely have multiple superintendents out here working underneath Matt, and those dependent on the project would be a foreman or a lead man running the self-perform crews. And that is, that's the other thing, that's, that's the only reason you're going to see us submitting on a package, is because we self-perform that work. If we weren't self-performing it, we wouldn't submit on it. Now, a general trades package can sometimes also be a catch-all package, because it doesn't necessarily make sense to bid out caulking on a job or casework on a job. So we try and lump all of those Division VI, which is carpentry items, and Division X, which is like marker and tack boards and toilet accessories and those types of things, into one package to kind of make it easier, so that when we do have a bid opening, we're opening up, you know, 15 to 20 bids instead of 150 bids.
Okay. And is there a percent of your work that you bid on that you don't get as a, so you're the CMAR, but you bid as a GC and you don't get that? Is there a percent, or do you generally get all of your own work?
Say that again?
So, you know, you're acting as CMAR and the GC, if you're bidding out, I don't think you do tenor, we'll say a tenor. Is there any time you bid that you don't have the lowest bid, so you let a sub come and take care of it?
Yes, that does occur.
And is it, is it pretty common or not?
Um, less common.
Okay.
Less common. And I think part of that is because we're very successful on the open bid market. We've cut our teeth as an open bid contractor, where generally, as you know, you look first at who the low bidder is, and if there's no reason to not award that low bidder, you give it to them. And that's how we get a lot of our work. And so, living and dying on the open bid market, we believe that we have honed the ability to give the best value to the owner. I can't just low bid it, you know? When I was in the Army, they always say, "Don't forget your rifle was made by the lowest bid contractor out there." Okay, thanks. So, you know, you want the value, but you, you want it to work, right? Well, you can't operate in a very small area like we do for 96 years and do it wrong. So we've learned to kind of hit both sides of the blade, give you the good value, but give you the good quality. And so I think that reputation with our competition is, "Well, I'm not going to vote against Brock Miller, I can never be Brock Miller." Well, they do sometimes, you know, and we encourage bids, we reach out to all of them. Our goal on every bid package is to bring you at least three bids on every scope of work, you know? And we'll solicit much more than that. But the reality is sometimes you don't see as much.
Yeah.
And I think to get back to your question, if I understand it correct about Matt, Matt is, we're bringing Matt in more as the CM superintendent, because we have no guarantees of getting any of the scope work.
Okay.
So Matt would be here to be the person that is our onsite representative for the entire bond-issued projects.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I want to clarify, I don't slightly question your integrity, but we, we're answering the taxpayers, right? So we've got to make sure that.
Absolutely.
We're doing our due diligence as, you know, form members, that sort of thing, so.
I get it completely, like, you know, Matt, Matt's on the school board, I was on St. Paul Lutheran School Board for a long time, and, you know, the, the duty upon you as school board members to be good stewards of those funds is enormous, and I get that at a very visceral level, so, you know, I appreciate it, and we're happy to answer any of those questions.
And if you, if you do ever get bored and you want to read the House bill that they introduced on construction management risk, I cannot say how well they did it, but they actually gave step-by-step process on how this system is supposed to work. So there is a rule of thumb on how this system's supposed to work, so you can always check that, make sure that we're doing things the right way, because I think they did a fantastic job outlining it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You know, the project's going on, there's going to be students and people everywhere, how are you going to ensure their safety? And then also, how are you going to be accountable, like, I guess, to the community? Are you, is there anything you're going to be, kind of present like, with the community saying, you know, "Hey, this is going on"? I know you're telling us the school, but what about, what about the taxpayer, what about the community?
Well, as far as the schoolwork goes, staff and student safety is second to none, because what we're doing is extremely dangerous, and some of these projects are going to be more dangerous than not, and some of these projects are going to possibly require us being in your facilities while you're occupying them. But being a state project too, we require that everybody has OSHA 10, most of us have OSHA 30, and we also have to do background checks with Missouri State Highway Patrol, that we will funnel through you and that we will require from all of our subcontractors that are going to be onsite, so that you guys know who's going to be onsite. And we, we manage that pretty well with the girls in the office, so you'll get the names of everybody that's onsite and be able to prove who's able to work onsite and who's not. As far as phasing and day-to-day activities, that'll be one of Matt's main responsibilities as far as making sure you guys are aware where we're going to be, and we, we're not telling you last minute, but it's more planned in advance, when we're going to shut down utilities, when we're going to have to do fire alarm drills, those types of things, temporary partitions, we're big on temporary partitions and make sure that, and fences, so that, make sure the students cannot get anywhere where they shouldn't be during school hours or after school hours.
And then, like, in the community, like, how are you, keep updates with the community?
As far as interruptions or just progress?
How the progress of it?
We typically let you guys do that. If you want us to do that, we're more than happy to, but in the, in the past, we've always left that up to the districts and owners that we work for to, to relay that information, but we're more than happy to. I mean, we're not, we don't have a big, we don't really have a marketing department, but if we need to send out letters about anything, we certainly can.
We do have a presence on Facebook and Instagram, not that I'm on it, but, but we do have the ability to do that. It's a, it's a little beyond what we typically do, but if that would be a desire of the board, it's something we could do. And back to your comment on just the, you know, student safety and everything going on, it's rare, just by the nature of schools, that we're not faced with those situation, because almost every one of our projects is on a fully operational school, and it's never clean, where student traffic, you know, staff traffic is not involved. We did a project in Festus a couple of years ago where we had to put a playground in the center of a ALCO, three-sided, and every day, the kids had to get from the bus through our job site to the school, and then every afternoon, they had to get back. And, you know, you just, it's not ideal, but you find ways to work around those. I don't know that there's many situations we probably haven't seen, they're almost all unique, but we've always been able to find ways to work it out to where you're successful, we're successful, and we get the job done.
One that comes to mind for me is, we did the CMAR work at the hospital in Petoskey, Washington County.
Washington County.
Fully functional, and we're working and renovating and doing drywall and finishes above ceiling, taking out tiles, infectious control, that was a challenge, but they were fully operational while we did that. What was the timeframe that we did the work in, and it was amazing what we did.
Yeah, it was, it was about five months of construction, and they came to us because they had a deadline, they had to spend the money by June 30th, and they came to us in November and said, "I got to spend all this money by next June, can we do this?"
They didn't have their design fully completed either.
And we said, "The only way you can do this is CMAR, because it's going to allow us to phase things in," and, which we didn't talk too much about, but it does, the CMAR process allows you to phase things in, like, say we identify something that's going to be a long lead-time item on your project, something that would hold up the balance of the project except for that one thing, you know, we can always make the decision then, let's do the design for that one item, whether it's a pre-engineered metal building or it's the site work, let's get that design first so we can put it out on the street, we can get that bid in so we can get that material order, that contractor under contract. That way, when we need it, it's already here, we're not waiting two or three or four months.
And Matt Pig's on campus 40 hours a week, he's going to know your principals.
Or maybe.
He's going to know your principals. And going back to the bi-weekly meetings, if you go back and look at that agenda, there's two items on there, there's safety and security, and there's laydown. So, you know, it's not just safety and security, but the other things that we have to coordinate with you guys is where we, where are the workers going to park, where can we lay down all this material that we're going to try and take on and ensure, so, well, it's all about communication.
Yeah, it is. There's not, there's not unfortunately one standard approach to it, but communication is the key, just talking every day back and forth about what's going on.
Well, you answered a lot of my questions about local contractors, warranties, things of that nature, and I appreciate that. I, you know, the, the company that was here previous talked about kind of integrating some learning into it, and we have a need here locally for more carpenters, more electricians, more plumbers, and if you don't have that, I'm fine with that, but I'm just asking, is there anything like that, that could or will be incorporated?
We like to give tours. So... So, um, if and when uh you decide, whether it's your pre-K kids or your seniors, we do internships. And we are big advocates for trying to bolster uh the trades in this area. And have been before COVID even hit. You know, you can ask Steve Pinkley about it. And that goes to us having a stake in this community, we grow uh from within. And so, we're hiring people like Josh Pinkley and um we've given some, we had Chet Meyer, who lived in Saint Jen, interned with us. And we've, we've, we're always trying to advance the construction trade. And as part of Mid East Missouri Contractors Association, excuse me, we give away every, for all nine counties that we cover, we solicit uh school districts for scholarships. And depending on how much money that we have, so basically, this is very neat. For every hour that a carpenter or a laborer works in one of those nine counties, our association gets six cents per hour. We use that money to turn around and give scholarships to kids that are willing to go to college or a trade school to advance the construction union trade here locally. And so, we've given them to kids that aspiring to be engineers. We've given them to kids that are aspiring to go to trade school and learn how to weld. Architects, landscape engineers, civil engineers. And so, we give away anywhere from ten to twenty thousand dollars every year, if we can afford it. And we actually have our scholarship dinner down at the Autobahn. So, uh, to us, we're, we, you guys did the career fair over at
We're also members of the Industry and Education Council, which is a consortium of school districts and uh industries uh in the local area. And as part of that, it was all, uh, the genesis for the program was, you know, how can we as a school district better prepare our students for, you know, positions in your industries? And so, it's grown over the years, but just in the last year and a half, I think we've done two career fairs, if you call them, or job tours, where we'll have fifteen to twenty students from ten different, ten different school districts come onto our job site in a day in thirty-minute, forty-five-minute increments. And we'll take them through, and we'll tell them about the trades, the opportunities, the work they can do, that sort of thing. And so, something like that is a model that we could use for doing just what you're talking about. It's not, I I'm familiar with what you're talking about, this, our, you know, S M Wilson does. We don't have that as well-developed, but we're familiar with it, and we do it kind of in a different fashion, primarily through the Industry and Education Council. But there's no reason that it couldn't be done specifically for a school district to enhance those opportunities. And believe us, it's something we're interested in. Finding good help is difficult for everybody these days, including construction. And finding local people, local students, uh, we see as our greatest source for our continued prosperity and productivity. Because no one works like local people do. So many of our tradesmen from Saint Genevieve County, Saint Francis County, Washington County, they go north to Saint Louis, you know, and we see them driving back every day. We've hired as many as we can, but we hear how valuable those people are, because people down here have great work ethics. And so, we're definitely all about letting your students know about opportunities in the trade, because we're hoping that they will be one day looking for us for a job.
So, if something, you know, I know there's other competitors in Perry County and other counties, but our kids, trades study kids go to Perry County Technical. So, you know, I'm not saying it has to happen, but that could be something that worked out where they could come see what happens.
We'd love to.
Absolutely, yeah, it's it's great, it's great building for us.
Mr. Willett, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Um, we have a drive, it's called Dragon's Flex. Kids who are on track to graduate can go to school two hours their junior and senior year, and the rest of the day, the day they can work. Or they can take a college class or a trades class. They just have to provide evidence to us that they're actually doing that. So, my question is about your internships, what's that minimum age that you take them? And they can actually intern with you?
I think we, the youngest we've had is seventeen.
Okay.
But um
I wasn't sure what your insurance might?
Well, we've got different opportunities, there's the field route, but then there's also the office route. And whether you're gonna go into the field or you're gonna go in the office, it's invaluable to learn. Either Brendan Amston, who is a lead carpenter for us, actually, when he was in high school, he interned with me in the office. And he would come into my office for a few hours every day during high school, because it was kinda hard for him to go out in the field for a few hours. And he would help me post addendums, he would help me write R F Is, he would kinda get that office side figured out. And then when he came, now he works in the field. So, now he automatically understands some things that most field guys didn't understand. And so, he's got a unique understanding on. And with with your, um, probably might be able to do that, because we'll have a job trailer set up, and we might be able to have somebody come in and help Matt with some of the the office side of it. Yeah.
I think our actual minimum age is sixteen, because I just recently looked into, they don't know about it yet. I talked with our office manager, trying to implement a internship program, because I'm on the school board at Bismarck, so we're seeing the similar challenges of encouraging, we're just now trying to redevelop our industrial arts program there. And uh, you know, we're kinda putting our money where our mouth is with bringing these kids in and letting them have the doors, because I actually just brought on a laborer who works for us now from the career fair at Bismarck. So, you know, we're, we're seeking those opportunities that we have. And actually, we would welcome the help that you guys would have, and how can we go about this to make that and develop this for something for our area and what would fit our kids' needs?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I don't know what you guys see going on, like, uh, so I went to Central, so my, my wife teaches at Central, my kids go to Central Park Hills area. And we had scene night for the football boys. And eleven of them boys out of fourteen were all going into the trades. So, what is happening, what these guys are doing, it's it's working, something's working, because two or three years ago, you didn't see any of that. And we need it, I mean, I work out there hand-in-hand, day-to-day, and we need help, you know, bad.
And we, we talk to the career centers, uh, you know, usually upon graduation at the end of the year, we'll ask them, you know, anybody that you've got that's interested in going into one of the three trades that we hire, ironworkers, laborers, carpenters, you know, let us know. We've hired a few of those that have shown interest. So, we always try to keep, uh, you know, keep track of that and try to solicit the folks that are coming out of those programs for opportunities with this.
We also built the Career and Technology Center in Cape, for Cape Schools, with Rich Payne. And uh, I know Rich is somewhat retired, but I still talk to Rich, and we're actually, as a Construction Manager at Risk, building the new Workforce Employment Innovation Center for MAC. And they've got two of the four spaces um already. One's gonna be shop, and one's gonna be a sheet metal shop. So, the other two, I'm trying to work with Labor's Local One Ten about maybe possibly becoming a tenant in there, so that kids can go, so that, one, the laborers can have a presence in this area, and two, kids can go there and get credit and apply towards their apprenticeship.
You've done such a great job providing information, I, most of my questions have been answered also, but I do have a couple, just a little add-on to what you've been talking about. In the last, you know, year and a half or so with COVID, I, you've kind of helped us understand how you address material shortages. But have you actually ever, like, had a lack of labor and had to delay a job or put it off for a while till you could get who you needed?
Well, labor hasn't been as big of an issue as material, and material, we've been able to be creative enough that we've been able to circumvent and keep the critical path on target. Because we're trying to, as professionals, navigate through the issues before they become issues. And uh, we've, we've done a good job at that, but I'll give you an example, we did some work at the jail here in town. And when we were designing that, we looked at how to, what made the most sense for that building. And it was a kitchen and a dorm. And we were looking at the types of material for that envelope. And we looked at doing block and brick, we looked at doing block, and we looked at doing a pre-engineered metal building with some masonry infill to keep it detention grade. And uh, I I priced all three of those and presented them. And as it turns out, the metal building was a little bit cheaper, but the timeframe in which it was going to take to get that metal building was not advantageous to the sheriff. So, that's another uh service that we can offer, is when K R J is drawing these items up, we can say, instead of doing that as a, you know, back then, pre-engineered metal buildings, we're gonna take a year to get. Now, they've kinda sucked back in, and they're more in a standard range of like sixteen weeks. But we're, we're constantly trying to identify, what are the issues today, and how do we navigate around them? And so far, we've had really good luck, there hasn't been anything where we've had to stop the job or um punt, if you will, so.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, if you know, again, with that transparency, and I'm not always a person on the know, like, either with Facebook or whatever, are there any big issues or problems that people out there might know about that the average person doesn't, that you should just tell us about?
With our company?
I mean, like a little pop, like a puff is in the last.
As far as litigation, we have no pending litigation.
Okay, good.
Um, and we have several references with uh owners, architects, uh employees or subcontractors. You're more than welcome to um ask them, but you'll hear it, I mean, we're right here, so if you haven't heard it yet, you probably, probably didn't happen, so.
And that doesn't mean that that we haven't had the same challenges a lot of people have had.
Sure.
You know, we just finished the twelve and a half million dollar performing arts center for Festus. And we thought it'd take fourteen months, it took closer to sixteen months. You know, and there were components of the theater lighting and sound system that we were waiting for up until a week before we were able to get it turned over, you know? And so, the supply chain challenges are real, and they have impacted projects. Now, one thing the owner didn't see from us is when we got extended by a couple of months, they didn't see us coming back and asking for additional general conditions, because we were onsite two months longer. We kept the board informed, I, I was the guy that got to stand up in front of the board, take the bullets and say, you know, here's the things that we don't get, and we had to be real creative. I mean, of all people, or of all products, who thought that garage doors were gonna be the things that it takes so long to get? And we had a fire curtain at the back of the stage that separated the stage from another area. It was a life safety issue, and you couldn't find these things. And we worked real hard to, I actually got the company that was providing it to steal one from another project that didn't have to be installed for another four months, that they had, and they put it in our project. And then we switched it out later. So, we had to do a lot of things like that, but they always didn't work out. And some of the things, um, like Matt's on the project right now for Popper Bluff, uh, Poplar Bluff Police Station, steel, right when we started the project, we had just been awarded the project, and steel was starting to balloon in their lead times. And the first company that we had contracted with to provide the steel couldn't provide it when we needed it. And we worked very hard to repurchase, uh, or to purchase some of the materials from them that could be there on time and find a new vendor for it. It was at a cost to us, and we didn't pass it on to the owner, but we felt it was the right thing to do for the course of the project. So, it's not always easy, um, but we try the best we can within our abilities to get those things done.
It goes back to being uh transparent and and constant communication with you guys, because we some things are a little bit easier to deal with when they're not surprises. So, we just, you know, there was a time, a few months ago, when we didn't know what the next phone call was gonna be. It was PVC one day, it was insulation the next, it was garage doors the next. There was a, there was a week there where we couldn't get paint. And so, we just, you know, as things would roll in, we'd say, "How are we gonna deal with this? What can we, how can we navigate it?" And we would tell the owner about the challenges we were dealing with, so.
And I'll extend that transparency, I mean, feel free to call Dr. Luttrell at Festus. You know, he's the one that had to sit here along with the board and go through those agonizing extra months. But I think he would still give us the highest marks and recommendation, despite everything that we went through.
All right, one last tiny question. Do you get bids from non-union companies as well, or you you stick with union companies?
Uh, we predominantly try to use union companies, however, there are some great non-union companies out there, like Vern Baumann, and that we use.
That's right, because I know some of our local companies are a union.
Well, Chip Marzocco did the electric on the, on the revenue.
And here's what we will do. When we bid this out, we will solicit qualified contractors that we know and that are local and in the surrounding areas. Then when they bid it out, and if there's other ones that you want us to solicit, we will. But one thing that we do after all the bids is we bet them. We go through everyone, and we do a post-bid interview. And I did that on the water park, same thing, you can ask your commissioners, I did it with uh everybody, all the scopes. After they were, we've identified who was low, I would interview them and the second low bidder. And I would just make, I would go through the scope of work and make sure that they had everything. Uh, and as far as that, I mean, predominantly, we do use uh union contractors, but there are some great non-union contractors in this area, and we've used quite a few of them, so. And everybody's got the opportunity to bid, so this ultimately, this is your project and your say.
Thank you.
Can you tell us about the big, biggest obstacle that you may have had in a project and how you resolved it?
Uh, I think, for me, the biggest obstacle that I've had has been here lately with the price increases. And again, I have not, I have not, knock on wood, been I have not had, it has, I, we work with great owners, uh, Cape Girardeau School District. When we bid that project, we asked some post-bid, or pre-bid questions, how are you gonna deal with, ask, price escalations? There's multiple phases on that job, and they said, "We're not gonna entertain them for phase one, because we feel like it could be done in time, which is August." But they said for the subsequent phases, uh, we will entertain them. So, we've had it, we've had some roof escalations that we have taken from the contractor and passed on to the owner to ask if they're willing to pay for it. And it's just been difficult, because we're asking, in my opinion, an owner to see if they will entertain paying for increases. Granted, this was a hard bid job, but we're asking them to pay for increases just so the contractor doesn't take it on the chin, knowing that they did everything in in their capability to to get it done, and they just couldn't. I mean, that's what's unfortunate, is these people like Zumwalt Overhead Doors, who do nothing but overhead doors, Cornell and Blue Giant, and then you get Minor Sagan Huffing, uh, Minor Sagan Roofing that deals mostly with Firestone. These people make their living off of ordering materials from a select amount of manufacturers. And now these manufacturers are putting them in a position of failure. And it's, we don't, we don't wanna see that, and a lot of the owners that we work with have been able to help them out, we've been able to help them out, and uh, but that's been, that's been kinda tough.
I think I might add on to that, just for the Poplar Bluff Police Department project that Bill had mentioned. We were, by the specifications, we were informed that we needed to hold our bids for sixty days. Bid in December of twenty twenty. And so, I think whenever we got the award, I went to Bill and said, "Bill, they gave it to us," and he goes, "Uh-oh." So, because we had structural steel that increased by sixty thousand dollars like that. So, we immediately had challenges that we had to overcome. And we got creative with that aspect, and right after we got through that obstacle, we ran into more and ran into more. But being creative, we're also finding other avenues to achieve the same goal that you're looking for. Uh, one being metal panels, I think, uh, Minor Sagan is the contractor on that project, and they had a quote, I think it was twenty thousand dollars on bid day for the material alone. And the most recent material quote that they got was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And they wouldn't commit to the price until it was delivered. So, with that, we changed how we were going to approach it. Gave the same system, but essentially, they're building the system. To give you the same product that you're looking for, but just a different name on it.
Without a cost increase.
Without the cost.
Because there's
That cost did not, it actually came with a credit to the owner, the five thousand dollars from what their bid was gonna be.
That's good.
There's certain things that, if you bid the project today, there's certain things that we go ahead and order tomorrow. But like glass and glazing, the challenge that Matt and I have been working on now down in Cape is typically, you can't order the glass until you've measured it. And you can't measure it till the opening's built. And the openings, sometimes on a bigger job, aren't built. the openings, sometimes on a bigger job, aren't built till eight months down the road. So, that's created some obstacles. And Matt and I have actually been guaranteeing dimensions for glass and go ahead and getting it ordered. So, there's, I think there's always a way that we can run it to ground and try and find a solution to it. But...
Oh, my goodness. Thank you, guys.
Okay, I know how Jamie feels.
Everything's pretty much been answered.
Yeah. So, we have 14 questions that cheat chi, I guess, to ask you guys. I really don't see any on here that you haven't answered.
Did a great presentation.
Down to the last question, which is, why should we select you as a CMAR? As a CMAR? And I think you actually answered that. But if you have anything else?
I'll just tell you that your guys' project means a lot to us. And, yeah, I know what you guys have done so far has been a big victory, I'm sure. But you've, you've, you've had one small victory. Now, you've got to see the rest of it through. And we want to, we want to partner with you guys to make sure. Because when this project's over, I'm going to be asking you guys if you will vouch for us with the next school district. And that's kind of how we look at things. We want, you know, again, we want our success is your success and vice versa. So, I'm excited for your guys' community, and we want to help bring it all in and bring it home for you guys.
Thank you.
And that next school district's not in Ladue, or it is Farmington.
It is Farmington.
Yeah. And you will not find more integrity and loyalty than sitting right here. I don't know who came in and out of these doors today, nor, doesn't matter to me. But I would like to say I run the tightest ship out there. But my day, when I start my day is, how many subs come and talk to me? What can I do to help you? Do I need to unload, help you unload your truck? Do I need to help you get your material in the building? Here's where you can put your stuff. Okay, is he in your way? It's just a constant day-to-day. And I make a hundred, I don't know why I don't lose weight because I make a hundred trucks. But I can.
You unload a lot of trucks.
Yeah. So, it's just, Rockmo is a good company.
Thank you.
It's all there is to it.
Anybody else got any further questions?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the time and the opportunity.
Thank you.